Council work session to order. Our first item of business is the American Rescue Plan Act update. Mr. Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, as you recall, it's your July 7th work session. The Director of Finance and the Deputy City Manager, interim Deputy City Manager, gave you an overview of the proposed uses for the American Rescue Plan Act funding being received by the city, which is approximately 30 million. Tonight, or this afternoon, excuse me, we'd like to go into more detail and specifics of those projects as you requested at the last meeting, some timelines, and also revisit the do's and don'ts and what we can do. With that, tonight's presentation, or this afternoon's presentation, it'll be with Ms. Hanson for a little bit, and then by Mr. Hughes again. I want to call to your attention, at your diocese, you have a outline of the projects as it's been assembled for you, and also on your regular session this evening, there is a public hearing to receive public comment on the proposal. With that, Tealyn?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. I'm going to go through very quickly the same type of information that I gave you two weeks ago at your city council meeting, just to give you a refresher, and anyone who was unable to listen to that specific presentation, a refresher on what we can and what we can't spend this money on. So, to start out with, just some highlights of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. We are receiving a total amount of funding of $30,65,296. The first half of that, we received back in June, just about a little over a month ago. The second half of that will be received in June of 2022. The funds must be obligated by December 31st, 2024, and then we have until December 31st, 2026, to spend them down, but they have to be 100% completely spent by December 31st, 2026. There is some quarterly project and expenditure reporting that is required along with these funds, and that reporting starts for the quarter ending September 30th, 2021, and my office will be primarily responsible for submitting those reports. As a reminder, the five broad categories of uses that are allowed under this particular, excuse me, I'm having a hard time with my S's and my P's tonight, the five broad categories that are allowable uses of these funds are to support the public health response, address the negative economic impacts of the pandemic, address public sector revenue losses, provide for premium pay for essential workers, and water, sewer, stormwater, and broadband infrastructure. And if you'll remember, the discussion that we had two weeks ago, there are specifics about what you can and can't do underneath those five broad categories, and there are some rules about each one of them. Lastly, for the last slide that I'm going to give you are the unallowable uses of the funds. We are not allowed to use them as federal matching funds unless they are specifically authorized under a specific grant to be used as federal matching funds. We're not allowed to use them for general economic development, general infrastructure projects such as road construction, bridge repair, unless they're funded through the lost revenue provisions of the uses. We're not allowed to use them to do extraordinary deposits into our pension funds. We're not allowed to use them to fund any kind of debt service, provide for any legal settlements, or provide for any deposits to our rainy day funds. We are also not allowed to use them as, for general economic development or workforce development activities unless they can be specifically tied back to addressing the negative economic impacts of the public health emergency. With that, I will turn the time over to Mr. Hughes, who's going to go through the specific projects that we as staff are recommending to use these funds for.
Thank you, Tealyn. Good afternoon. So, a lot of this information will look familiar to you. As Mr. Moore mentioned, in front of you is a packet that outlines our proposed use of the funds. What we talked about, and were questions that we received from you last go around, was the timing of the funding, a little bit more details to it, especially related to the financing or the funding coming in, and what that timeline looks like. And so, we'll walk through these categories for you, and what we estimate the funding will look like. Keeping in mind what Tealyn just went through, as far as what you can use, the specifics behind it, we will share and say things like, it's kind of like what we do in the CIP, and it is, with the exception that the ARPA programs has very specific uses of those funds, and obviously their timelines with that funding within it. And so, we want to make sure that, from an actual standpoint, that we're staying within our 15 million in the next two years, but then also working on these projects, making progress, and allowing some times, in case there are any changes, that we can continue to ensure that we spend all this funding and don't have to send any back to DC. And so, what you'll see in red on each one of these slides, and you'll see in your booklet, is just a reminder of what those rules and five principal categories are in the ARPA, and how we're trying to align our needs and uses in Suffolk with the ARPA program. And so, you'll see there are two specific ones out of those five categories here related to the nonprofit support, and that's addressing negative impacts and supporting public health. And so, what we're proposing is $1,515,296,000, excuse me, to provide nonprofit support. You'll see, as we program it out over the years from '22 to '26, we haven't specified exactly how those dollars be spent. That's on purpose, because we will have an application process, somewhat similar to how we respond and work with different partners during the operating budget, but those that are requesting funds will have to stay within those ARPA guidelines as well, because it works its way down. And so, it has to be very specific to what I just read in those red sections about the economic impacts and the public health response to the pandemic. And so, we've got to ensure that the programs and things that they're thinking about are directly related to that, and not just, say, an operating expense. We deal with those during the operating budget. And so, we'll go through that application process and ensure that it's well thought through, and expressed about how they plan to do it, because as Tealyn mentioned, we have to report that back. Broadband, obviously, is a critical need in Suffolk, and so, we've got a two-throng approach here, one from a hierarching, regional standpoint, and that's with the South Side Network Authority. Ourselves and the other South Side cities are building a fiber ring that's taking advantage of the subsea cables going into Virginia Beach, and promoting education opportunities, economic development opportunities, and public safety opportunities through this new fiber network. And this really, to think about it, is kind of like an interstate essentially for Hampton Roads, and that really speaks to the longevity and the opportunity for data movement in Hampton Roads, taking advantage of the subsea cables. There's a separate authority, which we are members of and responsible for. The construction of that kind of, that ring, that superhighway, so to speak, is equally distributed through the members. Our portion is approximately $5 million. You see that being spent in fiscal year '22, and that would be the total contribution. There is an operational expense of $150,000 in the early years. Of course, this is an opportunity for revenue recapture, once some of that fiber is leased by the authority, and so, you'll see that number decrease, and hopefully move into a positive revenue perspective over the long term. Again, that 150 will not be dealt out of this budget. You'll see that in separate programs and other budgets. More locally based on the broadband side, we want to work with our existing providers, and hopefully new providers, to expand the current broadband network in the city of Suffolk. And so, at a local level, how do we work and subsidize to move the lines into the rural parts of the city and other parts of the city where we don't have the data that the citizens need to improve their quality of life, education standpoint, and other needs? And so, we are also alternatively working with the CARES Act at the end of this calendar year to expand that, and so, this would be in addition to those numbers, and we hope to be able to spend that 3 million that we're proposing here over the next three years to have a quick, or a quick, an impact as we can related to this. We do not want to spend this out through the five years into 2026. Now, moving to some parts of the city that we'll talk about, some physical infrastructure programs. Out in Oakland, we're dealing with a fairly flat part of the city, and so, there's some significant flooding that we're seeing on a fairly regular basis. This would be looking at the areas of Brown Lane to Shell Road. We would look at a total of $6 million related to deal with the older drainage system that's in place and improve that. You see it programmed out through three years. That would involve engineering, that would involve potentially acquisition of property, as well as potential easements, and then final construction. And though, it's important to note that this funding coming in is a wonderful thing, that we can improve all the quality of life of a lot of people, but it's not magic. We still have to go through the procurement process, we still have to engineer things properly in construction, and there's a process with all those things, and sometimes these things take time. And so, although the funding's coming in, we still have to program and well design these improvements. Similarly, while we're out in Oakland, and opening up some of the properties and roads out there in right of way, we want to take advantage of that and look at some improvements of some water systems. There's currently some older two-inch water mains in place. We are frequently seeing some leaking, and some significant concerns out there. We would like to go in and improve those to six- and eight-inch water mains. That helps from a fire suppression standpoint, it's just as well as a quality of life, and so, we want to improve that section. What's important that we're looking on from a water and a sewer capacity standpoint, is normally those goes into the water and the sewer enterprise fund, and so, you're looking at taking that burden on that debt that would be issued in your water and sewer rate. With this funding coming in, we would not have to look at increasing the rate. We could take those on with this funding, make some people's lives better, improve that, and not have an impact to the greater rate of the citizens of the city of Suffolk. So, there's an important piece with that. Additionally, out in sewer, we have been requested to start the petition process, to look at, based upon the petition and the success thereof, taking folks off of their septic system and replacing it with a sewer component. Again, this would be based upon a successful petition process, which has started, the mailing's gone out, and we hope to hear back towards the end of August on that, to where we settle. Again, this would be similar, assuming that the petition moved forward without this funding. We would have to pay for that by issuing new debt, and there would be an impact to the sewer rate on that as well, so we would avoid that in this instance. Again, this would program out, design, acquisition of property potentially, a pump station potentially as well, and then construction, so it takes a little bit of time to make those improvements finalized. A little closer to where we're standing today, here, out in Williamstown, specifically out on Third Avenue, similar type scenario, where we have an old water main in place that needs to be improved and upgraded, and so, we'd be addressing that improvement out on Third Avenue. Additionally, while we're in the roads, we'd like to take advantage of that disruption to improve the stormwater out there. What you have there in some of the parts of downtown are wooden curb systems, and it doesn't really move water in a very conductive manner. So, while we're in the roads, we propose to make those improvements as well. We see that of each project in the ballpark of about $500,000 for a total of $1 million. Up in Pewsville, we've been studying and looking at this area for quite some time. Obviously, the residents are very interested in seeing some significant stormwater improvements in the area. We believe we have the ability to move forward on some additional engineering and hopefully some construction versus what was previously outlined in the CIP in some future years. And so, what you see here is continuing engineering and potentially some property acquisition this year of $700,000, and then following that in '23 with $1.3 million, and that would be expediting the projects that wouldn't start for another year that we have program into the CIP. And so, hopefully we could bring relief to that area much faster than is currently programmed. Lloyd Place and Rosemont, these are ongoing stormwater improvement programs that we've put in place in the CIP, kind of taking road sections year after year. This would also give us the opportunity to advance some of those improvements in both Lloyd Place and Rosemont. Specifically, we'd be looking at sections of Lloyd Place, Bank Street, Fourth and Fifth Street. So, we believe we could have a pretty significant impacts in those areas, 650,000 in '22, and then 625,000 in '23. Similarly, down in South Suffolk and Mount Pleasant, we'd be looking at Woodrow, Dill, Webb, and County street sections, and again, 650 and 625 over the next two years. And then, this is a new one, we've got some issues regarding stormwater out on East Washington Street. There's been some improvements in and around the 2,500 block. What we'd like to do is continue some of those stormwater improvements to expand what's occurred there from a private section. This, since we haven't been in there from an engineering perspective, we need to be starting from scratch, and so, you'll see 150 in '22, 150 in '23, then 700,000 in '24, but we'd be expanding upon some improvements that were out there as we begin to improve that section of East Washington Street, and hopefully in future years, expand those even further. As the manager mentioned, on your regular session agenda, you do have an ordinance to accept and appropriate the American Rescue Plan Act funds from the U.S. Department of Treasury to assist in the response and recovery of COVID-19 pandemic. And so, what I just outlined, and you have in front of you, are proposed improvements in use of that ARPA money, and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Council, questions or comments? Mr. Manager?
Yes, on the South Suffolk, we did leave off one street, and that would be Oxford. That was included with the Webb and Dill, and so, I just want to make that clear, so when we get further along, that everyone recognized Oxford was included in that. And in addition, also, as we move, the key, what Kevin was talking about, as we look at the time schedules here, really the key time schedule that we're looking at is the first year, because once we receive the second amount of funding, if we should be able to expedite work beyond that being arrived here, then we would. It would, may not fall into the third year, if it was potentially, could be expedited, because the funding would already be in place.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Councilperson Butler Barlow.
I just wondered if there would be any activity that would start in this calendar year, or is it all put off until '22?
Well, in the areas, as Kevin was speaking towards, if we talk of Pewsville, we're looking to acquire property in that area, or we would be doing some preliminary engineering in the other areas. As he noted, we need to get the project started with that upfront step, so that would be occurring as soon as the... So that would be occurring as soon as the, some of the funding's appropriated. Obviously, we're getting it in two payments, and I guess they want to call them tranches, but payments. So as soon as we have the first, which we already have the first 15 million, once that's appropriate to the right accounts, then we can start work in some areas. I'm looking at Teal and making sure I said that correctly.
Right.
Well, and sometimes there's a, you know, calendar year and fiscal year. So the fiscal year started, so the '22 in there, that's now, that's July 1. So once you accept and appropriate it, we're ready to go.
Counselman Fawcett.
I just had one item that I wanted to talk about is, this book has got a very aggressive layout of different areas for improvement. I'm just wondering, and you touched on it just a minute ago, Mr. Manager, is, things seem to work very slowly when it comes to contracts. So you feel very confident that you're going to be able to meet and move with an aggressive way to get these contracts out there for solicitation and get everything back in a timely manner so these projects can start? Because there's projects all over the place, so there's going to be many contractors doing things everywhere at one time. This is going to be interesting to watch when we have sometimes difficulty getting small things accomplished.
Obviously, we want to move as quickly as we can. Now, with the funding, of course, there's two key dates here. One is we need to have it obligated by December of 2024 and spent by 2026. Those are key dates that we need to meet. Now, if you take a look at, and I'm going to use Oakland right now, that's a large design project to get done. Fortunately, we do have annual consultants on board, so we don't have to go out and secure those services because they're already on board. And some of the work may be done by in-house forces on some of the ditch work that, or the piping that's already occurred. Obviously, moving all this ahead, we're going to need some outside assistance, too. So understood the question. We want to keep our foot on the pedal as best we can, but we need to make those key dates at the end. And I think we can do that to answer your question.
This is also a good opportunity because we've got so many projects, and before you know it, '26 will be here knocking on your door. This is a good time for contract people that want to do this type of work to come to Suffolk and take part in some of this. It's a good day, and we're only a small piece of this pie because other cities have got real good, big chunks of money to spend also. Some double and triple what we have. And so therefore, they're going to be out there bargaining for those same contract people because there ain't but so many contractors to go around. So this is going to have to be really mapped out and done in a way that we can meet the deadline. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I just have a couple of comments. As I've said before, I think this is a very prudent way to use these funds. We're advancing some projects that are already in our CIP. It's also going to have an immediate effect on a lot of our underserved areas that have, really, we've been fighting this for a long time in some of these locations, recognizing that we have an issue. But just like everything else, it depends on money. While we have the money to make a difference, there is a big chunk of this money contingent upon the petition process in Oakland as far as sewage is concerned. So once again, I think that everyone needs to understand that this is a plan, and any time you say "plan," that means it's flexible, it's not etched in stone. And I think what we're going to be doing as we go into our council meeting is just a resolution to accept the funds. I do have one comment as far as the nonprofit support. I noticed we have it all in '21, '22. We may want to think about spreading that out over a couple of years rather than trying to disburse $1.5 million in a year. I know we've had issues even during COVID, just with grant money, finding businesses to apply. So I don't know if that was the intent or not, but I think we'd be better served spreading it out. Mr. Manager?
Under the nonprofit support way we've put it in there, it's sort of spread out over the five years.
Okay.
If you take a look at the second page here, that's on the description. And again, as Kevin was talking about, that would be an application process for that. So, you know, it's dependent on how it goes. But how we've shown it on the written-up section, it stretches across the five years. And if we spend it earlier than we do, but if we're good causes. But not knowing exactly where we are, you know, we may come back on year three and want to divert it if we're not making any progress with it. But we think it's worthwhile, and that's how we've laid it out.
Absolutely. Okay. I appreciate you clarifying that. And that's the only questions that I had last time. Counsel, any other questions or comments? If not, thank you very much. And we will move to our second item of business, which is the signed ordinance text amendment update. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, at your December 2nd, 2020 regular meeting, and also on May 19th, at your work session, we presented recommended amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, editing the ordinance text regarding signs. Of course, a majority of the text edits were regarding this Supreme Court decision, which we've talked about many times. And subsequent to your May 19th meeting, staff did hold a public information meeting on June 30th here to receive input. And at this time, Bob Guma, interim director of planning, is going to provide the overview to you. We do have a public hearing on your regular session on this item tonight also.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. It's a pleasure to provide this briefing to you in anticipation of council's consideration of this matter during your regular session tonight. As a reminder of the journey that we've all been taking as brought us to this evening's public hearing, here's a list that the manager noted, some key milestones that have been in the works. This case was originally heard in January of 2015, and subsequent to that time, staff has been working diligently to prepare and the proposed rewrites for your considerations to our sign regulations. Some of those key dates were presentations to City Council, both in December of 2020 as well in May of 2021, opportunities for additional public comment. We held a public open house here in City Hall on the 30th of June, and then this evening, we have a public hearing scheduled. As you know, the principal genesis for this effort was a ruling by the United States Supreme Court that resulted in a conclusion that sign regulations cannot be content-based in their enforcement. Essentially, similar signs, under similar circumstances, same location, same size, or what have you, need to be regulated similarly. However, so long as the regulations are not content-based, sign regulations may continue to establish standards governing matters such as location, size, height, brightness, and so forth. In that light, staff was charged with to develop amendments that satisfy the court's ruling, while to the extent practical, continue to maintain our existing sign standards. These changes principally addressed how we categorize signs, eliminating content-based categories, and establishing new categories based on sign type. Because signs are addressed in several sections of the Unified Development Ordinance, there was a need to prepare various amendments to sections other than the one known as the Sign Regulations, Section 31714. For example, our special corridor overlay section, Section 31412, has some language in it pertaining to signs. So we needed to be sure we addressed all of the sections of the Unified Development Ordinance that have some content associated with signs. But again, we always had the intent to bring the ordinance into compliant with the read decision while staying true to our current sign regulations to the extent possible. I do want to point out that we did, however, utilize this opportunity to propose some modifications to the regulations in order to correct some standards and regulations that have proven to be and identified as being problematic in our execution over the years with regards to this. Again, our ordinances, we constantly are looking for opportunities to improve those. This obviously presented such a major effort that it gave us that opportunity to consider some of those needed changes. But again, to the extent practical, we attempted to maintain the existing prescribed standards for such things as location, size, and height. And here's just some examples associated with commercial freestanding signs, showing what the current regulation is, as well as what any change may be with regards to impacting those. I will note that down at the bottom, we do address residential subdivision freestanding signs, and you'll notice there that we have modified that to allow for two such signs per entrance, one on each side of the entrance road, and have increased the size of the signs from 32 square feet to 48 square feet, as well as allowing the sign to be a little bit taller than we currently would allow. Some of the most notable changes, however, that we have proposed include such things as making modifications to our standards associated with electronic message boards. These type of signs are permitted currently. However, for example, the display, we are proposing to allow the display message to change every 60 seconds rather than once every 60 minutes, as is the standard currently. Another modification that is included in the amended ordinance includes illumination and brightness in that the sign must be capable to automatically adjust to the ambient light conditions. And this, again, is a mechanism that would allow a sign not to become that too bright sign. When it's dark outside, the sign doesn't need to be illuminated as brightly as it would if it's in the middle of the day at noon in a bright sunshine. So the image that is actually received by the eye is noted so that it's not too bright. Some other changes we've also proposed include that in the amendment will allow mixed-use developments to erect a sign that is up to 45 feet in height, and this is when the development is located adjacent to a restricted-access highway, and that it is in 50 acres or greater in size. Also, the number of such signs would be further limited based on their proximity to one another. We don't want to have a proliferation of signs along the highway, so we are proposing a standard that when such signs are approved, that no two may be within one-half mile of each other. Finally, in preparing some modifications for your considerations, we made amendments pertaining to window signs, increasing the size of a window sign from 10% to 25%, and in some cases, depending on the transparency of the sign, how it's actually in the window and the zoning category, it may increase up to 40% of the window sign. As you can see here in this example, that's a fairly large sign when you, if you simply measured the border around the entire perimeter of what your eye depicts as being that sign, and it takes up a lot of that window. However, there's a lot of space between the letters, it's very transparent, and depending on the zoning district, such a sign may be appropriate. The reason we do regulate window signs is principally not only aesthetics, but for safety reasons also. In a place of business, we want eyes on the street and on the interior. This type of amendment, we believe, will benefit businesses, and particularly those located in the downtown area. In addition to the amendments that are contained in the proposed ordinance, which was provided to you in your agenda package, staff is also suggesting some additional modifications, principally to yard signs. These were prepared based on comments and directions that staff previously received from City Council during some of those work sessions, once the matter was forwarded to you after the planning commission. So in summary, with regards to yard signs, remember they are a form of temporary sign? And based on the comments we received, there was a desire to not have the number of yard signs that may be permitted limited. However, we do want to be sure that we limit the size and height of such signs, again, depending on the zoning category therein, whether it's a residential or business district and so forth. And in developing these standards, we worked closely with other departments, including the Police Department, to, in attempt to be sure, we focus on maintaining public safety. Again, I had mentioned that yard signs are a form of temporary sign. We are proposing the sign regulations do not require the issuance of a permit for a temporary sign. So this would, while it's a permitted sign for someone to have, we would not be reviewing the placement of yard signs, for example, prior to their doing them. And yard signs can be a lot of different things. They can be the election signs, they can be "we support our teachers" signs, they could be a contractor who's working on a piece of property on your home typically will put something out. So again, we don't require those to obtain a permit through a review process prior to Similar to the standards that we tried to maintain, addressing the size, location, height of signs, for example, the proposed ordinance also attempts to maintain the existing list of signs that are prohibited. And these include billboards and off-premises signs. Now, I do want to note that the tidewater building industry has taken exception to our position with the continued prohibition against off-premise signs, and that they are advocating for that they be allowed, and that that particular prohibition be removed from the ordinance. Other prohibited signs that we continue to maintain include roof signs. There are some notable exceptions that are currently in the Unified Development Ordinance pertaining to roof signs, portable signs, animated signs, flashing lights, and the like are all prohibited signs currently, and we would continue to advocate that they be prohibited in the future. So in closing, I do want to reemphasize a couple of things, that the proposed ordinance that has amended was amended to assure that signs regulate in a content-neutral manner. To the extent possible and practical, we maintain our current prescribed standards pertaining- pertaining to size, location, height, those physical characteristics, as well as the existing list of prohibited signs, and while we also include some of those notable changes that I mentioned before. Accordingly, staff suggests that in the following next steps be implemented. Following completion of your public hearing this evening, we would encourage the adoption of the proposed ordinance as presented with the following modifications, and those would include the, there was a minor edit from the planning commission to Section 31-412, which added the word "permanent" to sign, the permanent sign to the statement. Associated with that, also modifications to the sign regulations pertaining to the direction we previously received about yard signs that were made by city council. And then also, in reviewing this, a modification to the sign regulations, as suggested by staff, addressing temporary and A-frame signs in order to properly cross-reference an existing language in Chapter 74 of the city code. And this pertains to the, how the allowance of a A-frame sign into the public right-of-way. Chapter 74, there are certain standards with regards to when and how a A-frame sign could be placed on the street, in the sidewalk, for example, and there are standards with regards to that addressed in Chapter 74. So, we are also, just to be sure, to incorporate everything that might come, be read in the ordinance, to be sure to note to any applicant as well as staff that Chapter 74 comes into play here if they are looking to encroach into the public right-of-way. So, in addition to making these changes, again, I just kind of want to walk through this to be sure the procedure would be correct. We've provided to council a proposed ordinance that came out of planning commission, and that is the ordinance that has been presented for your consideration. To that, should you want to make any of the modifications that I just went over, the change planning commission suggested, as well as changes to the regulations that you all gave us direction on with regards to yard signs, as well as our suggestion on this Chapter 74, being sure to cross-reference that correctly, and any other modifications that you may want to consider, that in making the approving motion, when the council member and the second get ready to do that, that they be sure to incorporate those modifications, if you will, into the motion. Finally, I do want to emphasize that while we all have been working diligently on this matter, it has been a while since the Supreme Court ruling back in 2015, and as such, you know, our current regulations are not really in compliance with the court's ruling, and accordingly, I would think to some extent, they jeopardize our position with regards to how we regulate signs based on our current standards and our current regulations. With that, I'm available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gumas. Council, questions or comments? Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one strong question dealing with the Builders Association and their
Yes, sir.
And their request. It seems to me that their request is quite legitimate, that Section 31-714-D4 be removed, and I'm going to push for that to be taken out because businesses all the time have signs for off-site premises to, how to get there, how to get to the location of where they are, what it is, and I feel that their situation is quite legitimate in doing that. So, that's where I'm going to be, Mayor, on that one.
Council, any other questions or comments? I do have one, Mr. Gumas. Going back to the temporary signs, temporary signs are now unlimited, but restrict, just restricted in size, residential, I believe it was eight square feet, and then non-residential, 32 square feet and a six-foot height?
Yes, sir. Pertaining to yard signs.
So, how does that relate to businesses that want to put up a temporary, do businesses have yard signs?
Yes, sir.
So, a business, this ordinance is passed, unlike in the past, a business could put a temporary sign in front of their location with a maximum of 32 square feet and a six-foot height, as long as it's not a safety issue?
Yes, sir. And there are time limits on how long temporary signs may be up.
But they do not require a permit?
That's correct.
So, it's up to the business to be aware of what the timeframes are? And I guess that's enumerated in the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
As far as how long it can be up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but it would be at the discretion of the business?
Yes, well, yes, sir.
As far as when that time is?
Correct.
Well, that's certainly going to open it up for some additional marketing and merchandising throughout the city. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Goldberg?
I think many businesses do that already. They have sales going on for 30 days or 10 days or whatever, and they put signs up all over, and it's just that the size maybe might be different, but they put them up now, and so they take advantage of that. I think that's about what it works, way it works, right?
There is, and of course, currently, there are a variety of what you might call the temporary, temporary signs that restrict how long they may be up and so forth, and so since we cannot categorize signs based on their content, we needed to find the best solution that addresses all of those type of situations.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. My question actually relates to the yard signs, specifically the signs dealing with the elections. I noticed that in other localities, that they are allowing people who's running for office to put their signs out much earlier than we allow people to put them out. Of course, the discussion was made prior to, you know, me coming onboard, so I just want some clarity here. So, as it stands now, if you're running for office in Suffolk, you can't put a sign out until after Labor Day, is that correct?
Not anymore.
What is it now? Or have you changed?
Currently, I'm speaking from memory. Currently, for political signs, I believe you can erect them 60 days prior to the election, and they have to be removed 15 days after the election. Again, this change would allow, political signs is a content-based type of sign, so again, we have to regulate those based on the similar-type sign under similar circumstances. So, it would no longer be considered a political sign with regards to us, it would follow the same regulations as any other yard sign that you wanted to post in your property.
So, now, what you're saying, it's, now, if you have, if you're running for office and you have a place of business or you have a need to put a yard sign, not a political sign, but a yard sign, on your premises, it's okay now at this point? It doesn't have to be 60 days, but it's okay now?
That's correct. The limitation, there's no limitation of the number of times that you may erect a yard sign? There is a limitation on the time limit that it can be up. So, you can post a yard sign, meet that limitation, you know, remove the sign, and then replace it again to be in compliance. Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yeah, I don't quite understand it. That's what you're just talking about. Did you feed the purpose sound like if you could put it up and then take it down for a day and then put it back up again? To me, that's defeating the purpose why I take it down one day. Should be a time limit on it. That's my whole thing with it, rather than say you can take it down one day and then put it right back. You can do that forever and ever and ever.
Well, again, there is a time limit, but again, we are not requiring permits for these signs, and that, again, because of the variety of types of yard signs that can be imposed, it would allow someone to do that.
I think that's wrong, but anyway.
I understand, but again, we need to be sure that our regulations are content-neutral.
Right, okay. My other question, I want to go back to the electronic signs that you said, they're about to change and the regulation on the time that they can change?
Yes, sir.
The message signs, so they can be every 60 minutes now?
Second.
Every 60 seconds, rather, because it was a long time before you couldn't have rolling signs in the past, because I know some people that, well, one church in particular have a sign and couldn't use it because of that.
Well, let me be clear, that currently, the message, the display, whatever that display is, picture, text, or whatever, and as of today, those signs, that message may only change once every 60 minutes, every one hour. The proposed amendments would allow that text and message to change once every 60 seconds. However, you would not be able to be rolling texts through without having it wait that 60 seconds. It's not a continuous change or flashing or what have you.
Okay, okay.
But it tries to accommodate the need to change, you know, once in every hour is, can be a long time depending on what you're trying to
Yeah. Well, I was just trying to get a greater understanding, because I know, just like I say, I know at least one church that have a sign and couldn't use it because of that. So, okay, thank you.
Councilman Ward?
I want to ask this question, the yard signs, the business yard signs, is there a place they should be able to put them throughout the community? Any specific place? They can just drop the signs anywhere they want?
They must be on their property. Yard signs are not permitted to be within the public right-of-way, but you would be allowed to put it on your property, and you would need to comply with the size standards that we would establish. But yes, sir.
Okay, are you familiar with, any area in Harborview or College Square? Are you a little familiar with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. They would put in signs all over in the Harborview community. College Square, they were putting signs right there, Magnolia Road, anywhere. What I'm just saying, so, you're saying to me, they got to put it on their business? They can just put them anywhere in the community?
It would need to be on private property, yes, sir.
Okay.
One thing I do want to point out, too, as we work through this, you know, we've been having these conversations both internally with council members as well as, you know, outside agencies. We're proposing what we feel accomplishes what our charge was, but that's not to say that, you know, as we evolve and work through this and implement it, if there's a need for modifications that we did not address or that we find is problematic, we can address those with a text amendment. So, I don't want us to feel that, you know, we'll never be able to make changes to this. But we do need to move forward as best we can with modifications to our current ordinance to get something on the books that does comply with the regulations. And if we have problems that may exist, I think that would give us a stronger argument of why something needs to be regulated if we were challenged on it. So, again, we can, we'll do this, we can provide a report back to you based, you know, six months or what have you at council's discretion to report back on the success, problems, and the like.
Council, any other questions or comments? I'd like to thank Mr. Gumas for his presentation, and also agree with him, as this evolves, I think we're going to find that, I may be wrong, but I think we're going to have to have more stringent restrictions, but those restrictions can't be content-based. So, what we've done now is really just what we needed to do to adhere to the new regulations as far as content is concerned, but I can see some of these things being an issue. To Councilman Williams' point, I mean, the way I read it, I mean, every day can be campaign day, you know, as long as it adheres to the yard sale ordinance, so these type of things may get out of hand, but we'll wait to see. Thank you very much, Mr. Gumas.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay, that concludes our items on our work session. At this time, I'll ask the Madam Clerk to present a motion for our closed meeting.
Pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A8 and A1, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the legal advice of such counsel, and the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment, and the assignment, appointment, and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city. Specifically, the appointments as shown on the attached list for vacancies or term expirations for the Clean Community Commission, the Clean Community Commission, keeps up a beautiful executive board, the Community Policy and Management Team, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Economic Development Authority of the City of Suffolk, the Fine Arts Commission, the Historic Landmarks Commission, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Library Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, the Paul D. Camp Community College Board, Suffolk Sister Cities Commission, Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, the Planning Council, and the Wetlands Board.
Motion is in order. Councilman Fawcett?
I'm going to approve.
And a second? Any volunteers?
I'll second.
Vice Mayor Bennett, a second? Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll, or record the vote, excuse me.
Can you vote?
Oh, yeah. Councilmembers, prepare to vote. Please vote. Phew, kind of hit on myself.
The motion's been approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our work session is now concluded. We will reconvene at 6:00 PM.